Good evening, welcome to the January 3rd, 2018, meeting of the Newmarket Town Council. Begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have one councillor, absent this evening, Amy Thompson. Councillor Thompson has an excused absence. And open the public forum at this time, if any members of the public would like to address the council. Seeing none, I close public forum at 7:01 PM. There's no public hearing, and I would accept a motion to approve the minutes for the December 20th regular meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any corrections or changes? If not, please call the roll.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Finch.
Obstain.
Councillor Cast.
Aye.
Councillor Bowden.
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein.
Aye.
Councillor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 to 1.
And please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Who's recording the minutes? Who's recording the minutes? Missing, missing.
Oh, she's doing it by tape, I apologize. First, I wanted to publicly thank the Public Works in the Environmental Service Department for their efforts during the Christmas storm. While many people were the blizzard that we had on Christmas Day and the significant amount of snowfall, only people realized that the crews were actually called in on Christmas Eve at 9:00 PM due to water main break on Bay Road. So basically, they worked through the night, starting at 9:00 PM that evening, until 3:00 in the morning, when the snow started and had to turn around and begin plowing for the full day. I just wanted, I wanted to thank them publicly for all their efforts, especially during the holidays, and the number of compliments I received for the state of our roads as well. People were just impressed that they were just so well done during the holidays as well. So now, we'll roll into the next storm, and I'll give an update where we are. We've been monitoring the storm for the last few days. Today, we had conference calls with the Department of Homeland Security for the state, and it's going to be a significant storm tomorrow. We're not under a blizzard warning here, but we're on the cusp. There is a parking ban in effect from 6:00 AM tomorrow morning till 6:00 AM Friday morning. Any vehicles on the road may be towed or fined. We will be having no school tomorrow in the district, and we will be closing town offices to keep people off the street. One of our philosophies are that if we ask people not to go on the streets, then we shouldn't be encouraging people to come into the town offices. So we will be closing off town offices tomorrow. I have had a couple of questions about warming centers, because right after the snow, we're going to have another Arctic freeze Saturday, supposed to be a high in the negative degrees. We do not have a warming center at this point in time, and we do not have, and there's only one overnight warming shelter open in the state, and that's in Rochester. If we have a need for it on Saturday, we will have only a daytime warming center open, which would be basically open from maybe 7:00 to 7:00 or sometime during the day, but it would not be open at night. It used to have, the Red Cross used to open shelters town by town, and they stopped doing that, and it's now on a regional basis. And they, there's no indication at this point in time that they would be opening any shelters, I think unless there's a major power outage on, from the results from the storm. They're predicting, as of right now, anywhere between eight and 14 inches of snow for here, and as I said, it's on, we're on the line for coastal Rockham County, which will be having, which does have a blizzard warning in place. So that's where we are, we'll be notifying everybody tonight via email and give updates throughout the day tomorrow. Also, on my unwritten report, I'm happy to announce that the next week, the town of Newfields Board of Selectmen will be taking up an agreement between, that we've come to an agreement on providing dispatch service for their town again. As the council is aware, I emailed you the agreement, so you wouldn't be surprised, but you'd be voting on it sometime in February. It's, would be for $28,000 in services for the first year, and that would increase by the CPI Boston in the second year, it's a two-year agreement. They, both police chiefs and fire chiefs in both communities have been working hard on getting this done, and hopefully, we can see that come to fruition. I know the police chief is going to look at other communities as well, to continue to tread off the surface. We've been getting a number of questions, as many people are aware, prior to the end of last year, we had a number of individuals pay their property taxes ahead of time due to the new tax law. Well, the law didn't quite fit what people were assuming, and so we had some individuals ask whether or not they could have their prepayment refunded. There were two legal opinions, one the town tax collector got, one was from the Tax Collectors Association, and one was from our own legal counsel. And in regards to refunding property taxes that were made in 2017, there's actually no statutory authority exists to refund prepayment, just because somebody requests it. A prepayment's not an overpayment, as no bill was issued, and a tax bill for 2018 wouldn't be coming out until the spring. So the state law allows us to accept the money, but it doesn't allow us to give back the money. So that's where we are with that. And that's all I have time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are there any, I see no comments or questions about that, are there any committee reports? I see none, wouldn't expect any, since our last meeting was December 20th, that's, okay, let's move on then. Resolution 2017-18-24, authorizing the town administrator to enter into a contract with educational building consultants for town hall security improvements. Where it is, whereas it has been determined that town hall requires additional safety and security measures.
You just needed by town, since you're voting on it.
Okay.
Save your voice.
That's a good suggestion. We'll stop there. Could I have a motion to approve Resolution 17-18-24, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-2018, 27-24.
Second. Any comments? Any questions? Please call the.
Do we have a presentation?
Yes.
Or we don't, do we not need it?
If you have no questions, we don't have to.
Okay, okay, so, no, I didn't know.
That's probably a good idea, even for the people at home, just to have a few words to say, this is what it is.
Yes, we're looking to do increased security and safety improvements to our town hall. That's about really all I have to say at this point.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Finch.
Aye.
Councillor Cast.
Aye.
Councillor Bowden.
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein.
Aye.
Councillor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Yes, good idea. Resolution 2017-18-25, authorizing the town administrator to enter into an agreement with Energy Efficient Investments to conduct no-cost energy auditing. I'd accept a motion to approve that resolution, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-2018-25.
Second.
So.
Yes, we're requesting approval for this, to move forward and do an energy audit, which will allow us to look at performance contracting for our town facilities. There was a RFP or RFQ put out that requested information back, a committee was formed. We entered, had two respondents to our RFQ. We met with, we set up schedules to meet with both of them, one did not attend, one did. We asked a series of questions that were developed prior. The company that did attend, being Energy Efficient Investments, answered all of our questions that were pre-established. Their particular audit does come to us at no cost, where the other company's audit does come with an expense if we choose not to engage with them. That's why we're recommending going with them. It's quite a lengthy process that we've been at with this, and you'll notice there's not a ton of supporting documentation, because I'd have to give you this plus two more books. So I kind of opted not to do that, just because it's, you know, a little light reading and go forward. We are strongly recommending this, because it does allow us to not only get this audit at no cost, but allows us to take the steps going forward to recommend performance contracting for our town facilities, which will allow us to do upgrades within our facilities based on energy savings. For instance, the cost to upgrade the heating systems, as you know, I repaired something quickly over there tonight, in this facility would be paid for by the savings of energy that that particular new system would operate under, and it would be paid back over savings over a period of time. We've also done some reference checks, and one of the reference checks I had yesterday was with Plymouth Schools. In their particular case, they were looking at approximately 15% energy savings, and one of their facilities ended up being 30% to 40%. They did over $3 million with Energy Efficient Investments, extremely happy with them, and planning on continuing to do a Phase 2, a 3, a 4, so on and so forth, as they go forward. So it appears that Energy Efficient Investments does a very good, they are New Hampshire-based, and they only work in New Hampshire. They're not a multi-state organization, so they're quite entrenched in the state of New Hampshire. So we felt quite comfortable with providing this recommendation, or the committee felt quite comfortable providing the recommendation going forward.
I have a question, in addition. One of the things, you know, that we, the committee, which was made up of myself, a school board member, Kennison, a member of the public, Russ Simons, and Greg, and Chris Andruski, the assistant superintendent.
The school administrators, yes.
And this company, a lot of the performance contracting companies are a one-shot deal. So if you go with them, they're going to do the audit, but you also need to buy their materials, their system, for the rest of the, basically, the life of the contract and the life of the system. This company, on the other hand, will do the audit, and then make the recommendations, and help us go out to bid for different companies who can come in. It may be a little more at the beginning, however, you're not tied into this one company for the life forever. And that was one of the benefits that the committee thought was one of the highlights of that, of this bid. Now, just a quick question, did the school already approve this, or?
That, well, it was supposed to go up tomorrow night's meeting, which has been canceled. But it's been well-supported from the feedback that I have, so I don't foresee any issues of it not being supported school-side.
Councillor Cast.
So I did have, my original question was about flexibility, because I assume when you pick this company, because there's, even though there's no obligation, you do anticipate going forward with them.
We anticipate, based on the report or the energy audits, looking at making improvements. So we would use them as, because they are the guarantor of the energy results and the designs. The difference between them and, say, another contractor is, they don't rep one line. In other words, they're not a controls manufacturer. So they would look at all of the different control systems out there, and then make a recommendation to us of which one would be our best fit, not their brand. The same with the equipment that they may be recommending. So we're not beholden to, and since they didn't submit a bid, Johnson Controls wouldn't be saying, you're going to use Johnson Controls equipment for this particular thing. This company could be Johnson, it could be Siemens, it could be any of the other control contractors out there that may be, we engage with for these energy improvements. So it does give us a lot of flexibility within that. They also look at what they call an open, or back net system, which will allow us to have multiple vendors looking at it. And that's what we're really trying to do, is not getting us necessarily tied to something that we're, it's going to own us forever and ever and ever.
Okay. So I appreciated you bringing up the flexibility part of it, because that was a question.
Councillor Weinstein.
Can you just talk a little bit about what an energy audit entails, and so what sort of systems they'll be looking at, and how in-depth they'll be going?
Well, I think the quick answer is the roof down and all around. They go through the entire building envelope, not just the heating systems and cooling systems, but they look at the plumbing, they look at the windows, they look at the insulation levels, they look at the roofs themselves, and how well they're performing. So it's really a very encompassing audit. And in order to gain our largest energy savings, you have to look at all of that. So you can come in, and you probably hear a lot of people, we talked about, we did a lighting project for the town, those are those low-hanging fruits, that have those quick paybacks. Well, the good part with those quick paybacks is they also allow us to use some of that quick payback to pay back something that is not necessarily as quick. One of the toughest things is, is windows, windows are a 40- to 50-year payback at best. But if you have something that pays back in two years, and you do it over a 15-year span, you may be able to put windows in, because the payback of something else is offsetting that. So that's how we, that's how that is kind of really looked at holistically of the entire facility from the ground up.
And, can I, and so they'll be looking at every, every building throughout the town?
County and schools.
I, again, I have said this at a bunch of meetings at this point, but had the opportunity to hear from a lot of these different vendors at the municipal conference that I attended, and I'm very much sold on the idea of performance contracting, and had the opportunity to talk to representatives from this company. And so I thought that they were very well-spoken and articulate about the projects that they've worked on, and, you know, they, I saw some of the examples of projects, so feel pretty confident about this.
I think one of the biggest pluses that our performance contracting has is it's a net-zero impact to taxpayers. We don't increase the budget to do these improvements to our buildings, we're paying for them by the savings in energy that are created by improvements. And that's a huge plus, especially when you start talking impact to taxpayers.
Councillor Bowden.
What is the term that we're going to be, or that we may be agreeing to, as far as time?
We won't know that term, if it's a 10, 15, I don't like to go over 15, you can go up to 20 years in the state of New Hampshire, but we won't know until we know what the audit results show, and what kind of paybacks that we actually have. So we could be saying, this particular building is a 10-year, but another building is 15, because it doesn't have the same return. So we'll look at those, and of course, these will all come back to you for approval, once we get to that point.
So I guess, I guess the question was, how, what is a term that we are agreeing to with this company? If they come in, they do the audit, and we don't do anything with them, we don't do any of the changes?
We owe nothing.
So we could go ahead and make changes on our own?
We can, yes.
I'm not saying that's what.
Yeah.
We would do.
We can. And I've done that approach elsewhere also, and I've actually done both ways, where we've had the audit and gone through full performance, and where we had the audit and did the work ourselves to try to save some of the contracting costs. A lot of it has to do with cash flow.
We actually, I asked them that during the interview, they said, so you're saying you're going to eat the audit if we don't go with it? And they said, yes, we understand that, but it's, they want to put that up front to be able to work with us on other projects.
Yeah, as I would understand it, what we are basically agreeing to at this point, by this vote, is that we're sort of giving them exclusivity in doing this audit. They get to do the audit, we're not having other companies do an audit at this time, and then they get to present their results to us. And that's all that we're really guaranteeing by the vote tonight, as I understand it. The thing you might give me a little more insight into, it all sounds good to me, I don't, whenever I'm even looking at a contract down the line, I like to understand how the company I'm working with makes their money, and I don't fully understand how they make money yet, and so that's.
They make money on, in the long run, are the energy savings and the guarantees in the installations. So there's a, there's a profit margin built into, like, the installations for that company to do.
Okay, so I thought we could pick our vendor, do they take?
We can, we can, but they're managing the process, so they have a piece of the pie as part of.
There's a cost of their services at that time.
Unfortunately, nothing's for free, as we know.
No, no, I don't expect free, I just want to know, make sure I know what.
It's sort of as if they're serving as a general contractor, and they're the ones overseeing the project, part of their, plus, they're also assisting with the financing. So they will go out for the help.
At the end of the day, they have to guarantee the return, they have, they guarantee what the energy return is. If they don't meet it, it's their risk. So they, they have to make sure that certain parts of a manager, who we use to do those contracts, who we do to use those installations, what materials are at our discretion with them, but they are a very integral part of the process.
Yeah, and just to finish that up, is the way, when we make our payments, and the payments we'll be making will be based on our current energy use, right?
It's our current energy use, and then as energy costs go up, there are escalators that they have, that, because you have to.
Right, and what if energy costs went down, like they have at times?
We actually reap the benefits of that.
Okay, so it's that, it just, it's sort of, they may have escalators, de-escalators, but it's based off current usage?
And their typical energy calculations that they're going to target are going to be about 80%. So if they, if the return is 100%, their cost basis is based on 80%. So there's really a factor in there that allows for that movement or protection, if you want to call it. So there is, there's a lot that goes into it, once we get to that point, but this is the first step we have to make, in order to even find out if we can do anything.
And I'll pass this along, but I just want to finish up. So is, are they making money, going back to that, again, I don't mind they make money, I just want to understand it, is that they make some, by operating as a general contractor, there may be, but we're not really paying upfront for the cost of the work, right?
Nope.
So they're, so we don't, they don't see their payment at that time? They see it as a function of a part of the savings that is getting made on?
Typically, what happens is, is they get paid based on what's a lot of times referred to as a municipal lease. So at the end of the day, there's a bond that they're getting paid for, and the payment to said bond is through that energy savings. Typically, a lot of times, it's run right through them, they get their money upfront, they just have to make a guarantee that lasts over that period of time, whatever that period is.
So they go out to some financer that gives them the money, and then as they pay, make their bond payments, we're paying them enough based on the old energy usage.
Correct.
If there's enough savings, it makes their bond payment, and some profit for them.
It's profitable for them, and hopefully, as I mentioned with one of the references, their return was at 15% that they guaranteed, and they were actually, they're actually running 30% to 40%, which means that community's saving more than the guarantee, so that's actually reduced their cost of overhead.
So I'm sorry that I asked about eight questions in a row, but I think it's Councillor Cast next.
Oh, it's a good start, thank you. I had a question, I don't know whether you or the town administrator can speak to the combination of doing it with the schools, and if the schools, schools decide not to go forward for some reason, is there, there's not really any net?
No penalty, we'll just go forward.
Is there any, is there any net gain?
By not having them?
By having them.
Oh yeah, absolutely, because if, just by scale.
Yeah.
And if we have one company that comes in and wants to do all our heating systems, and we'll have one town-wide heating system.
So that would be the downside, then, that would be, that synergy would be?
Yeah, lost, right.
Lost, okay.
I will say that the support that we had in our committee from the school side, and the support that I've had from the superintendent with it is very high, so they're very interested. For instance, I know we're doing a major remodeling of our schools, but our elementary classrooms are not seeing new lighting. Well, new lighting is one of the biggest returns. We can replace all of that lighting in the school, and should see some pretty significant energy savings by doing that. So it's a plus for both, it really is, it's good practice for both.
Councillor Weinstein.
I just have two quick questions, I think. So, I mean, do they look at solar options?
They look at every option, solar, wind, geothermal, all of that, as part of it.
Okay, great. And then, how long do we expect this to take?
It's a couple-month process, it's pretty in-depth. They go through all of our, not only just our billing, but our facilities, and they do testing, and they'll do envelope testing, so it's a pretty tedious process.
So springtime, do we think?
That's when we're not probably looking to, hopefully, be able to bring some more information back, and make some more presentations at that point.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's worth mentioning, the school was really, I heard about the school being on this before I even heard, I mean, they were, they were talking about this at the early stages of the discussions about the school renovation. So the school's been talking about this for a couple of years anyways, I think, so I think they're. Did they come to the same conclusion, you must know, is it the same vendor that if they're going to go with somebody, is this who they will go with?
We made, they actually have a memo from me, also requesting the same vendor, it makes no sense to go with two vendors, and I mean, that's one of the shared services of things that we're trying to work on, so it really, it creates good practices.
I see no more comments, want to go to the vote?
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Finch.
Aye.
Councillor Cast.
Aye.
Councillor Bowden.
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein.
Aye.
Councillor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
And next up, Resolution 2017-18-26, authorizing the town administrator to enter into a contract with Skyradine Systems for community center safety and security improvements. Could I have a motion, please, to accept this resolution?
Make a motion to accept Resolution 2017-2018-26.
Second. Any comments, questions?
This is a continuation to our security improvements at all of our facilities, this is the next facility. As you can see, it's considerably less than what it costs to do town hall, and as we talked to you about, when we did start at the town hall process, we needed to put a backbone in place, this ties into that existing backbone system, and it's going to allow us for a much higher level of safety and security measures at community center.
Councillor Weinstein.
Will this include, I know this is primarily the building, but will it include any outside lighting? I know that was brought up as a concern, it's dark in that area, people, you know, we have some nighttime programming, especially now when it's dark at 4:30.
This doesn't address the lighting, but I'm working on the lighting as another component elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, I'll have that to you within the next meeting, so.
Yeah, and I guess it's worth mentioning, and I think it's, you addressed it here, but, you know, since we're working with one vendor for the backbone and everything else, that means that it's sort of on you to make sure that the pricing is appropriate moving forward, because it's not a competitive situation anymore.
It's difficult in certain systems to get into that competitiveness, and this happens to be one of those types. There are other companies that rep the same product, but then we get into passwords and access, and a lot of issues that I'd like to avoid. So yes, we're, we look at them, I can tell you, when we put access on a door, you're going to spend $2,500 to $3,000 a door, to put it on a door, and that's pretty standard costing, so we do look at that carefully.
Councillor Bowden.
Looks like the platinum service agreement is, what is being proposed here? Do we look at any other levels, silver?
The interesting part is, they have a platinum service, and another company has what they call the white glove service. We can do without any service, we just pay for the regular maintenance checks, they don't kind of have an in-between with it at this particular time. I'm sure that they can customize something if we wanted to.
Curious to see what the difference was between.
the white glove service. We can do without any service, we just pay for the regular maintenance checks, they don't kind of have an in-between with it at this particular time. I'm sure that they can customize something if we wanted to.
Curious to see what the difference was between platinum and different levels that they have, I guess.
I've done it without any service on it, and I gotta say, the service, in this case, it's $1,200 and $1,207 a year, paid for itself, because anytime there's a software problem, a camera problem, it's covered.
Seeing no other lights, hold the roll, please.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've taken enough of your time, Ken.
So you staying home tomorrow?
Everybody, yes.
Not just going for a joyride?
Well, I might.
They can work remote with the new phones.
Stay safe. Okay, and oh, Resolution 2017-18-27, replacement of Channel 13 broadcast equipment, I'd accept a motion to approve Resolution 1718-27, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-2018-27.
Second.
IT Director is here to discuss.
Yes, go for it, please.
I think in the write-up on the staff report that I said, Channel 13 has become one of the main ways we're feeding information out there to the public, including its streaming properties, if you will. We've had some issues in the last year, some being kind, with quality, with outright failures, and the equipment is very old, and we submitted an RFP to companies that wanted to submit quotes to us, we got back three pretty complete quotes, I have to say, and we are recommending that we should go with the Telview one, it's, I believe, about $6,000 more than the next lower one, but we do get free streaming and free video on-demand with that. But the other one, that's $8,000 a year, so it really pays for itself right off, right out of the gate.
So that you know, this is the, the system we're currently using is the original
Pretty much.
system, since Channel 13 was founded, so it's
Continental Cable Vision, if you remember them, 15 years ago, it's pretty old stuff.
Counselor Bowden?
Counsel Cast first.
Oh, sorry, Counsel Cast?
Either way, do you have, so you said the main difference was the streaming and on-demand service?
Yep.
That makes up the difference in the two goods? Do you have metrics right now on how much those services are being requested or used?
We know, we know the town hall, what's called Town Hall Streams, which is our current streaming provider, gets used pretty extensively, actually. We have no way of knowing what people watch on Channel 13 itself. Comcast doesn't monitor that, can't give us those numbers, so we don't know who's watching this on Channel 13. Online, we just get a bandwidth allocation every month, this is how much bandwidth you use, so we don't know, are they watching the most current ones, are they watching older ones, are they watching, but the bandwidth is always pretty high, so there's a fair amount of watching going on.
What percentage of the bandwidth allocation would you say has been consumed?
It's an unlimited, it's an unlimited pipe they give you, basically.
Okay.
So, it's, I don't know, it's a chunk, it's a lot.
I'm just trying to get it, the justification for the additional streaming and on-demand, you know, that the demand is there for those services, or that you have some trending that they're being used, so it's worth that extra money.
Go ahead.
That's actually probably the number one thing we're requesting, is actually the streaming and the on-demand. Since I've been here, most people have been, you know, they can't watch it live, and they can't watch it when it's on a repeat, so a lot of people just go on their computers now and watch it. I think if we didn't go with it, and we didn't have the video on-demand or the streaming, you'd actually also be cutting out a large portion of the customers that either don't have cable
Right.
or use satellite service. This is the only way they can get public access, is through the streaming.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning that it's a method to get the information out there, it was more, how much is it, is it being used to justify that?
Yes, I mean, from conversations, yes, I don't have the technical information there, but I could tell you from talking to the public, when they come in, they say, oh, I watched it online. Not only that, we use it internally to look back at meetings, and find out what was said or what wasn't said, or even to do minutes, so it's, I mean, $8,000 is well worth it.
Counsel Bowden?
I guess in similar lines, as far as viewership per month, will this new system allow us to see, monitor anything as far as capturing the viewership for non-technical terms, I guess?
Tim, you might be more aware of that.
Will the new system be able to capture viewership status?
Well, the new system, unfortunately, we're a third party right now with Town Hall Streams, so the only thing we're able to really do is send them the signal for our lives, though. With the new system, we'll be able to do everything that's on our channel. So for stuff that we tape outside, for graduations, for everything we have, for plays, we'll be able to put that all in the same place, and we'll be able to find out who's watching, not who, but how many people
Right.
are watching what, and actually, we'll even tell what times.
By the IP address?
Well, yeah, we'll be able to know, yes, by them logging in or not logging in, but yes, like going to the site saying, all right, well, it's our highest rated, or our most viewed thing this month was the Christmas parade, or the Christmas concert, and 53 people viewed it on Monday, another five people viewed it at 8:00 AM on Sunday, so we'll have all that information. And the other fun thing about going with the Telview or some of the other companies is that we can eventually expand into Roku Channel if we decide to go that way, and other means of getting media out there. It's more expansive, it allows us to grow more, whereas the other systems are kind of just, this is what we have, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the second part of the question, I guess, was G and G and Telview look to have pretty extensive quotes? Access AV?
Yep.
It doesn't look to have much meat?
No, they just, unfortunately, that's the way they put their quote together. Both Telview and G and G, they went very labor-intensive as to what we're getting and, you know, so what we expect. Access AV, kind of just, this is, you know, you want a new playback server, this is what we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Burns?
I answered my own question, I found it in here, so.
Thank you.
Counsel Weinstein?
Sorry. Just anecdotally, I know that I personally have used our streaming services
Yep.
and on-demand services quite a bit, and I know that others have as well, and I think it's an important service for the town, and for people to get information at this point, so I think it's very important, and I guess my hope is that this will improve, I'm assuming that it's all in one package, this will improve, you know, the sound quality because it's frustrating when people
I know.
watch a meeting and they can't hear.
Right.
So that will all, it's all one bundle.
Counsel Finch?
The only question I had was Telview, which is, I guess, what you're recommending, in terms of streaming, is it going to be available easily from a variety of devices? Because I know, I've watched the stream too, but I find that you really want to use it on a computer, but is this going to be available to more basic devices like tablets?
Tablets, laptops, everything.
So just ease of use for, ease of accessibility, I guess?
If you have an internet connection with Flashlight, you're good to go.
Okay.
One question I had is just not so much about which vendor, but will this change make it better for people listening at home, maybe it's good already, but the hockey puck that we got first from Counsel Bowden, that for people that are calling in remotely, that has been such an improved experience here. Will the new technologies make it easier for people at home to hear the counselors that are calling in, or make that more seamless for people?
I, the biggest thing is, is it puts it all in one place. So for right now, we have a playback server, and we also have an on-demand site, which are two different companies that we're sending two different signals. So what we're really doing is we're splitting the signal, and one's going Comcast, the other one's going to Town Hall Streams. So, and if we have a problem with the online side, I mean, there are times when we're watching on TV and we can't really see the difference, because we can hear fine, but people at home who are watching on Town Hall Streams have an issue with it. And yes, so that means we have to then go through other channels to get there, whereas with Telview, with all being in one place, the signal goes one place and gets sent out the same way. So we don't have to even worry about that, and if we have whatever issue, then we can know immediately that this is an issue, and we can solve it immediately by going through our tech support, or working with one of their guys to come out and fix it.
Counsel Cast?
As we've heard proposals for other systems that we're upgrading or moving to new technology, we often hear that we're not having to invest in equipment anymore, and the companies that we're contracting with will kind of upgrade things for us as things, technology improves. What's the nature of this situation?
The software updates they'll do, so we'll get all the software updates. As far as certain hardware updates, we'll have to invest in, for example, if we want to go with Roku Channel, that's an additional piece of hardware that, you know, so we would have to purchase. But, so all software updates they do, it's just the hardware stuff that we want, that we'll have to invest in at some point if we choose to go that way.
Okay, so we're still investing in hardware at this point?
For the playback server, yeah.
Okay.
So we're investing in the playback server and a few other components to have in the rack, and then the rest of it's gonna be all, let's go software.
And I apologize, I'm not at all familiar with these kind of systems, so I'm, do you know if that model is changing anytime soon in this area, the way it is in other areas?
We're gonna be getting what is there, they actually just went through a series of changes, so we will be getting the most up to date. It's probably about five, six years out before their next hardware update.
Okay, so we're looking like a five to six-year horizon before we might want to consider upgrading again?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And just out of curiosity, because we usually ask this now, is any, what the school uses the service, our service, when they're having meetings in here? Do they have a different streaming service they use for school events? So it's
No.
all this service
Yep.
is being used for school in town?
That's the other thing we've kind of included in the proposals, is the ability to go on location for different events to do live as well, yeah.
Great, great. Sounds very good. Seeing no more lights, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. Any correspondence to the town council?
This, there's a resolution you need to read.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ordinance action.
Okay, yes, I skipped right over that. So interesting, be none here, I don't press for you. You got it right there?
Yeah, you want me to do it?
Sure, go ahead.
Ordinance number two, 1718, ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of the Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, allowing permitted parking in certain lots. The Town of Newmarket ordains that Chapter 30 is hereby amended with the following, by adding the following article, Section 4-38, stopping standing and parking, adds 29 Beach Street extension to the locations of permitted parking from 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM. It takes place, effect upon passage, and there has to be a public hearing at the next meeting.
Counsel Weinstein?
I don't know if I want to bring this up now, or closing comments, or whatever, I guess, but it relates to this. So where parking has been brought up now for multiple times, and I know we had some conversations about the business association, do we want to put this out there, where we're gonna have a public hearing, let the business association know that that's happening?
This isn't for businesses, this is for
No, I know.
residents who don't have parking.
Okay.
This is, because it's only
Strictly residential.
It only permits parking from 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM. It's basically lifting the, there's no parking ban in that law, so they can park there.
So my second part of my
We're setting up a meeting with the business association.
Great, thank you.
Any correspondence to the town council?
Yep.
And closing comments? Any other, any closing comments? I have one, if nobody else has one, I'll make it the closing comment.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, you can go first.
Well, actually, I have a question, because I forgot to bring the information with me. I know there's gonna be a bonfire for the town, but I don't remember the date or the time.
The Boy Scouts are sponsoring, I don't have the information, I think it's in the Glass Community Letter.
Oh, great. It's the 13th of this month, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the high school. But that's where people can
Not at the high school, at the carpenter property.
Across from the high school.
Yes.
I'm glad I can read. Yeah, thank you.
I just didn't want a bunch of Christmas trees to end up on the high schools front lawn.
I think that's great, because I live in a building where there's a lot of Christmas trees getting dragged down to our dumpster, and it's like, no, don't just leave them by the dumpster, you know, we'll put a flyer up for this.
They call a number
Right, this is not a town-sponsored event, so we are not picking up trees, the Boy Scouts.
Right, so they have to call up to have their trees picked up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought it was a great, great event.
And it'll be over before any potential Patriots playoff. I was actually concerned.
I'm sure that there are probably some
And my comment was that, before you know it, on this, matter of fact, opening on January 24th will be the time where people can sign up if they are interested in being a candidate for the town council, or for the budget committee, and for other town positions, and I, for, we get a lot of comments, I get a lot of comments from people that feel that the town is doing well, and I think people generally feel good about how things are going in Newmarket right now. I think it's really important for anybody who thinks they might be interested to step forward, it's really important to have good candidates, we've had great candidates, but it's always a little scary right now while you're waiting for new people to come forward, so not saying who's gonna run again and who's not gonna run again, but I do think, usually there are openings, and it's really great to have contested contests, and we appreciate people considering it. And seeing no other lights or comments, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.